Writing right now, the analysis we have at the table with everything on the table, the town is now picking up close to 31% of the total betterment costs. So you want to keep that as low as possible. Let's go with a 20-year negative interest loan.
Did that answer your question?
No, no it didn't. I thought it was a simple yes or no answer. Whether it's 0%, I thought this S, maybe I don't understand things.
It's a negative interest loan for 20 years.
John, John, hold one second. Get your whole question out, sir. I want to make sure you get an answer to it.
I understood that basically the 24 or 25 million dollars from the SRF, that it was going to be a 0% loan. Is that correct or am I completely mistaken?
All right, now Mr. Prendeville.
Yes or no, please.
Is not, just a yes, no?
It is not a 20-year, it's not a 0-interest loan. For the 30-year, it is about a 1%, I think, isn't it, John? A half a percent plus. For the 20-year, it's a negative 11%.
Mr. Schubert.
It's actually, because of the funding alternatives, the 0% loan paid back over 20 years works out to a negative 1/2% on the total loan. If you pay it at an interest rate, if you pay it back over 30 years, it works out to approximately a half a percent on the total loan.
Okay. My only comment, I think any of us, if we could get a half percent loan for our mortgage, we'd love it. We'd be excited. And I'd say for that extra 10 years, if I can have an extra 10 years for a half a percent, that's great. So I urge very strongly, vote no. How could you do anything else? 10 years at a half a percent? The best deal in the world.
I don't know who was next, but I'm going to recognize this lady.
Thank you. My name's Hillary Dorner. I'm from Penny Circle and I'm a resident in the sewer district. And I can see some smiles already from people who see me at these meetings. You know what my topic is. One of the things, my understanding, and John, maybe you have the exact numbers in front of you, is that the total betterment for a 20-year loan is $12,000. And the total betterment for a 30-year loan is $12,500 or $13,000. What is, you have those numbers, first of all. And this does, there is a significance to this. No, it's not.
The betterment charge in either case happens to be the same. The current calculation with the $5.5 million of the, of the school avoidable cost being transferred to the town would have the betterment charge at $12,700. The assessment charge, which is the betterment charge plus the interest charges, will be $13,742 for the 30-year debt. For the 20-year debt, the betterment charge is $12,700. The assessment charge, because of the negative interest loan, this is the total, would be $12,253. Now you divide one by 20 years, one by 30 years, obviously, to show that. But in fact, the assessment charge for 20 years is less than the betterment charge. That's because of the negative interest loan. Does that?
Yeah, well, that, now I have to comment on that if you wouldn't mind. Just so all persons in the room understand what this means, is that the 30-year loan, you will have a lien on your property for the amount of $13,742. For a 20-year loan, you would have a lien on your property for $12,253. That's an essential thousand, over a thousand-dollar difference, or just about a thousand-dollar difference. Now, the reason I point out to you that thousand dollars, sorry. The reason that I point out that thousand dollars to you is because when you go to sell or refinance your home, and I, and I want to emphasize that this will occur when you refinance to get that next lowest interest rate, or to work in an equity loan into your total and pay for college educations, whatever purpose you go to put a real estate loan on your property, you will be forced by the bank to pay off the remaining amount of that betterment. Therefore, if in three years you go to pay off your loan, or pay off your mortgage and get a new one, you will end up paying the $13,742. Or if we go for the 20-year loan, then we'll only have to pay $12,253. So although those annual payments seem smaller, and they are smaller over a 30-year period, you will not be paying them for 30 years. You will not even be paying these for 20 years. You will be paying this betterment off early. It's part of the financial market these days and it's how it happens. You will save yourself $1,000 out of your pocket if you approve of this amendment and vote for the 20-year loan. Thank you.
Mr. Frederick.
Yeah, I haven't done the math, but I would say the, if you go for the 30-year loan, you would probably save many, many thousands. Now let me pick it up from the last gentleman. I think we would all agree that getting a 20-year loan at a half, a negative half percent is a great deal. If you take the numbers that were up on the board, which basically is a $25 million package, that in 20 years we pay back for roughly $24 million, and, or 30 years in roughly $26 million, you've got 11-point spread, the 89 cents on the dollar. Now, the 89 cents on the dollar wasn't from the face amount, it was the delta between the 30-year loan and the 20-year loan. Now here's the question you need to ask yourself. If you can pay 11% more and take 10 years to do it, which would you select? I think if you impute the, the other thing, the other fallacy on these numbers is that everybody likes to refer to NPV, net present value. The bogus part of every presentation that I've seen, including most of ours, is that we picked some bogus net, uh, uh, cost of money. And the cost of money picked, I believe, for most of these exercises are 4% or 4.3%, somewhere's in that range. Now here's, let me explain cost of money to everybody here. The cost of money is one of two things. It's either the highest interest rate that you're paying on anything, or the highest interest rate you are getting on your best investment. Now, I would guess that many people here would have a best investment in the 15% range. And I would guess that many people here would have a credit card in the 12% range. Certainly, most everybody's got a mortgage in the 8% or 9% or 10% range. So my guess is that the cost of money for most everybody sitting here varies somewheres between 8% and 12% or 15%. That's your cost of money. If you throw that cost of money in and you look at getting another 10 years to pay the debt back, it's, I think it's slam dunk.
Mr. Schubert, you have a technical correction.
I have a clarification, a correction to Ms. Dorner. I want to be clear. There is no interest. The town, let me correct myself. The town is not assessing and will not put a lien on your house for $1,000 more. Legally, all we can do is we assess, right now, John, correct me, I think the assessment is $12,748. If you pay it off day one, it's $12,748. If you pay it off in year three, because you decide to refinance, you pay off $12,748. You are not paying $1,000 more because you're paying it off early and we took the 30-year financing. That is absolutely wrong.
Gentlemen in the middle.
I need a little help with this, Mr. Moderator. I want to call the question, or move the amendment, or whatever it is.
Do you want to move the previous question? Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate on the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The debate is cut off. We will now vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the amendment, say nay.
Nay.
The amendment has lost. We're back discussing the motion, the article unamended. Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Moderator. I want to comment on Mr. Schubert's presentation. One of the issues that he had on his chart in making the presentation for this article, I believe it was the last one, and that is that building the sewer system is a less costly alternative for the school system. Now my understanding is that in Article 1, we have agreed that if we build a sewer system, that the town is going to pay the offset costs of what it would otherwise cost to. So it seems to me it's, it's the same either way. Now, so my question is, am I correct, or am I missing something?
I think Ms. Stuntz has an answer to the question, and she has a chart that may give you the answer. Two charts. Go ahead.
I just have one, and I don't have one that gives you the answer, but the answer is, uh, the estimated cost of the, of the sewer treatment facility for the schools is $5.5 million. But if it is incorporated in a town sewer system, it is an interest-free loan. If it is not incorporated in a town sewer system, we would have to pay interest, and better economists than I can tell me exactly how much we would be paying. But it's something substantial over $5.5 million. Can I just?
Is this on the same subject?
This is on the schools and sewers.
I don't think right now. I'll take the gentleman in the middle. Mr. Cadillac is correct. I'll ask Mr. Prendeville. I think that, that is correct. We should have the finance committee's recommendation on the article as unamended.
The finance committee has a recommendation, but based on what has occurred with the transfer of funds, we would like to, we would recommend, request a five-minute recess to evaluate our position.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to take a recess. They can caucus and meet, and I will recommend, recognize the gentleman in the middle and then the lady on the side.
Bob Schubert, Alcott Street. I confuse easily, but I have a feeling something has been, being slipped by us here. The, out of the 25 million, 25 and a half million, somewhere a number of 5 and 1/2 has come out for the schools. There seem to be several numbers tossed out here this evening, and I don't understand the 5 and 1/2 million. Presumably, it's what it would cost if there were no other. But to put it on a fair basis, suppose the schools weren't involved and you built the sewers for the rest of the town. What would that cost? 24 million? Now you go in to add the schools, that only maybe adds up enough to another 1 and 1/2 million. So we take, the town takes the 24 and 1/2 and runs, like some people want to take the 5 and 1/2 and run and add on. It doesn't sound quite fair. Why don't you put it on an equitable basis of usage? What percentage of the equitable, or whatever, would the schools use? And why don't you put it on that kind of a basis? Does anybody have the numbers? I, I, there were some numbers earlier. I don't remember them. But it's, it seems as though here, it looks like there's a grab or a show of the money onto the town, like the extra 1.3 million, of which a half is debatable, I think. And then somebody else suggested sliding another 2.3 million on top of that onto the town. It was one of the earlier things. So what's, what's wrong? I could support, I could conceivably support this if we were on an equitable basis, that is, on the amount of usage. And why hasn't that been proposed or considered? It seems as though, it's, the assumption has been made that the school is going to, that the town or the schools is going to make 5 and 1/2 million contribution.
I'm going to recognize Mrs. Stuntz in the hope that your question's going to be partially answered, at least. If not, I will ask someone else, Mr. Schubert, to answer the question.
I'll try. I think there's a piece of the equation which seems to be missing, and that is that the schools, the regional school district, is under a DEP consent order. That means we have to do something about our sewage treatment, or else, huge fines. We have been negotiating with DEP for seven years on this. The reason why the DEP has been so lenient is because they expected town sewer-ing. The 5.5 million comes from an estimate of the cost for putting a sewage treatment plant on the central campus. That includes everything, the leaching field, the sewage treatment plant, the pipes in the ground. That is the current estimate. And that is why 5.5 million is being put in the sewer package for the price, of price cost avoidance for the town. Because if we do not pass sewers, the town has got to do something about the schools. The cost to the town, instead of being 5.5 million and a no-interest loan, John Murray has assured me, is $8.4 million if the sewers don't pass.
Did that answer your question, sir? Now go back to a microphone. You'll never be heard from there. Mr. Schubert may also have the answer. I'll try him before you speak again. Mr. Schubert.
It is in the bylaw under Section 3, users' fees for land not subject to assessment. I believe the question you're getting at is, how do we know it's, it's a fair allocation? We use a term called flow units, which is the actual, the amount of water going into the school system and into the district through private homes, and the amount coming out at the other end. Right now, currently, that's estimated based upon all of the studies that we've done, is that the schools portion, actually, schools and town municipal use will be about 15%. 15%. And the district, and the district includes residences as well as commercial properties, and that's about 85%.
Okay, as opposed to 20% of the cost that you're allocating to the schools. Based on a usage basis, the schools will pick up 15% of the cost. The way you have structured it, your, the schools will pick up 20%, correct?
That's not what we're proposing. That's what the bylaw already says.
Then is there any problem with a bylaw? That could, that could be, could conceivably be amended then, couldn't it?
Not at this meeting.
Not at this meeting?
At a, at a future meeting.
I recognize Mr. Probst and then the lady on the side.
I, I think you've heard some reasonable questions about the cost sharing and what's fair and our costs being shoved. One rule of thumb for figuring out of our costs being shoved onto you is, are you paying more because of it? And what the sewer proposal now says, as we have voted it so far, is you will pay less with sewers than you would without them. That doesn't sound to me like costs are being shoved onto the residents outside the district. And in fact, if there is a cost balancing, you saw the presentation earlier, the district is overpaying a little bit. It seems as fair as we can make it tonight, the way it's now been proposed, the people living outside the district will indeed spend considerably less than they would if there were no sewers.
The lady at the side microphone.
Thank you. Julia Miles, 138 Prospect Street. I wanted to go back to something that came up at a number of the sewer action meetings and ask whether anything's been done, and in particular whether this article that we're discussing right now prohibits action on the following. We heard about the fact that a lot of these, that the betterment is a lien on your property, and if, if you sell or refinance, that you're going to end up paying that off. And there was a discussion that if a lot of, that if a large number of loans get paid off early, that that would have a positive balance, and that that might somehow be funneled back into either betterment credits or operating and maintenance cost. I'd be interested to know if there's any further information on that, but more particularly, does this article prohibit something being done to the benefit of the district in the
Mr. Schubert.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen voted tonight unanimously to establish an enterprise fund for the sewer district. All monies collected in the district will stay in with the district to lower future costs.
Thank you.
I'll now recog- I'll recognize Mr. Prendeville. The finance committee has met.
The finance committee after his caucus would, will recommend this article with the full understanding that there is incumbent in it, a requirement for the town to be prepared to pick up the costs from, in one of the budgets, municipal or otherwise, of the, of the transferred cost. They aggregate now to about 7.9 million. And just a quick arithmetic, if those are bonded by the treasurer at 20 years, that could accrue out to about 600K a year with interest and, and principal. That means, as this, as this process goes along, that there has to be a way to pay for that. And this is not a cost-benefit analysis. This is cost. These will go over and will be in somebody's budget, competing with or requiring extra revenues from some other source. The number is about 7.9 million that we've transferred to date, tonight.
Gentlemen in the middle.
Mr. Moderator, I have three few graphs. May I show them?
Do they pertain to anything we're talking about tonight? Some of it I have had some question on.
Yes, they do.
Then come right up. You know, I was thinking that I would personally go for the 30-year loan. Because I'd like to last 30 more years, and I know you have to pay them off.
I'm Bill Combs, and I live in Two Sew Street, which is not in the district. But I am sympathetic with the people in the district, because I think it's been revealed by virtually everybody from the district that they're overcharged. One thing I'd like to point out tonight is that the schools will have a new sewer system. The mothers don't have to worry about the kids running around on sewage. This will be done. And if you reject the residential aspects of this, you're not affecting the schools, you'll have the schools. So what I wish to do is examine the residential aspect. Now, I think it's interesting to look at the numbers, because in the numbers, there's a big story. There are 700 district residential and multifamily units. Of these, we find that roughly only 5%, I think they quoted a number of 42, maybe I didn't get the latest number, but a number like 5% have failed. 5% is a small number. It's not 20, it's not 40, it's a small number. And let me say that to fix these, I would say, myself speaking, all of them are fixable by standard Title V techniques. Now let me witness the standard V techniques. You go to five Mohawk, big hole in the ground, fixed with standard techniques. You go to 34 Mohawk ledge, lousy ledge, tremendous ledge, fixed with standard techniques. And when you look at Idlewild by the Brook, fixed with standard techniques. So let us face up to the fact that the sewers in the town of Acton are all fixable by standard Title V techniques. Now, in addition to fixing these things with standard Title V techniques, let me mention that the Department of Environmental Protection has some 23, what they call innovative and alternative techniques. So there's no lack of techniques to fix even those few that slip through the cracks. So we come down to something like this. In the end, we must face up to the fact that the whole problem is correctable by Title V techniques. The septic systems are all fixable by Title V techniques. There's an abundance of techniques to fix them. Now let me give you an example of a given, another community. I know everybody's on the bandwagon. Sewers, sewers, sewers. There's only one way to go. But relax, there's never that situation. There's multiple ways to go. And you will find out, in a little town north of San Francisco, they had 700 onsite sewers dumping into the ocean. They had a tremendous problem. The town meeting went through this kind of thing. Everybody sat, they voted, no central sewers. They voted again, no central sewers. Why? Too expensive. Terribly expensive. So they did not implement them. What they implemented was a simple course of action. The guy didn't want to fix his sewer, they shut his water off. It's very effective. The guys fixed their sewers. Now, let's go a little bit, a little bit further and closer and look at Gloucester. Gloucester has a sewer system. But when you look at what Gloucester has done, even today, and you see the technology changes taking place, Gloucester now is veering away from the central sewer system. What's their newest project? It's a cluster sewer. They didn't waste taking the pipe over to it. They wanted to save the groundwater, put it right in where it was. So they went to the cluster sewer, which is a local unit. And what, the other thing that Gloucester did was enforce their sewer codes. So the whole idea that you need a sewer system isn't printed in granite. It's a choice. Now, the conclusion I've come to on this is that you just don't need them. You're going to get into a $25 million, and I would say $40 million. This thing has gone from 10 to 20 to 25. You're in $40 million. And where is that added money going to come from? It's going to come from your pockets. That's where it's going to come from. Those are the bucks. Now let me conclude here.
Now, give the man his due, please. No more people signaling to me, time is up.
I know it isn't popular for you.
There is no time limit. Let the man finish, he's going to do it in two minutes, he said.
I just say, let's spend for the schools, but let's not get embroiled in a $25 million program that's going to escalate the program that's gonna escalate the $40 million. Let's not get embroiled in that. And also, all you're doing is subsidizing the commerce. When does the town of Acton, when does the town of Acton want to subsidize commerce? Well, what function is it the town of Acton to subsidize commerce? Nonsense. We don't want to do that. And what you're paying for is a not-needed sewer. You just don't need it. All you have to do is correct your sewer, your septic systems. I feel that when you look at the numbers, that only so, your failure rate is so small that it should be, that you don't realize it. You haven't looked at the numbers. So look at those numbers again. 700 units, residential units, only 5% that have failed, and all of those are correctable by standard Title V techniques. I think you're on a bandwagon here. It's popular, but I would reject it. Thank you.
I recognize the gentleman at the side microphone.
David Black, 237 Central Street. Does somebody's direction committee have a figure for how many of those 700 residences were actually tested for Title V in the past few years?
I don't have any numbers for the sewer district, but approximately 50% of the properties that go under a transfer situation end up replacing their septic system.
Okay, that's good enough. I was gonna point out that Mr. Combs' 5% number is an example of lies, doggone lies and statistics, because most of those 700 units that he used to calculate 5% have not been tested. If the number that was just given is correct, something like 70 units were tested, 35 failed. That's, that is a serious problem. I also want to talk about what it is these standard techniques, these standard techniques do, and what, and what the implications are for the future. I bought a house here about eight or nine years ago. It's got a 10, it's got a 10-year-old septic system. At the time, it was, it was state-of-the-art. I've got this WISI control panel down the basement, does I don't know what. And this was compliant with all the environmental regulations and gonna last me 20, 30 years. Well, guess what? West Acton's flat, down the street, they just renovated a house. And lo and behold, this grade in the side yard's been raised three feet. Now, why's it been raised three feet? Because Title V says you've gotta have that much separation from groundwater, and they have to raise the grade to do it. So guess what? I've got a perfectly functional septic system that won't comply with Title V. Good thing, knock on wood, I don't have to sell the house now. If you think that the new septic system that you're installing is gonna last you 20 years, you're a surprise coming from Beacon Hill. The folks who brought you Title V, who tightened the rules over the last 10 years, are gonna tighten the rules over the next 10 years. They're not done, they haven't even started yet. And so where, and so where this goes to is that as those rules get tightened, all of us are going to get squeezed. You're gonna find things like the historic center of West Acton, which I fondly remember, somebody once put up a calendar that said, "This was photographed, this is classic scenic New England." That's gonna get squeezed. West Acton's flat, all those systems, all those systems serving all West Acton Center are gonna flunk Title V sooner or later. We need to act now. As was mentioned earlier, about once a decade, sewers come up, and the first thing that they set as part of debate is, gee, 10 years ago, we looked at this and turned them down. And boy, do we wish we could've had now the deal they offered us then. Don't make that mistake again, please.
Mr. Moderator, actually, Mr. Black gives me a perfect lead-in, because one of the points to consider is the very obvious and simple and often previously stated fact that this does nothing for the rest of the town, and in spite of Mr. Hunter's well-intentioned comment that we're gonna keep working on it, those of us who have been paying some attention know that there are some severe limitations as to how far this particular sewer system could conceivably be extended. And we have paid, as a town, as a town hall, as a port of health, and this is no reflection on anyone, almost no attention and spent no effort in trying to solve the rest of the town's sewer problems. And Mr. Black is right. Those are out there. Mr. Doug Halli is right. I think if I heard him correctly a couple of minutes ago, he said the failure rate across town was 50%. He didn't say the sewer district. So that leaves us with the question, if we pass this for $25 million, where do we go from there? Let me suggest that since many, many things have changed in the last very few days, particularly on the money side of this, that in spite of some comments to the contrary, we do not have to make a decision tonight, and I'll explain. You recall Mr. Gottlieb was asked, and I wish he was still here, because he could perhaps confirm that, that we have until next June 30th to make a decision. If we make a decision tonight, we either vote this thing up or down. If we vote it up, if we go ahead, as it stands right now, the total dollars allocated to the general tax base is somewhere around 30% of the total cost, some 7.8, 7.9 million dollars. As I said earlier, and I won't repeat it, that allocation could change. So those of you in the district who are tempted to vote for this on the basis that, ah, the town is gonna pick up 7.9 million, may be disappointed. I just want that to be very clear. I wouldn't want anybody to stand here at this town meeting in the future and complain that the cost is higher than they thought it would be. So if we vote for this, we launch this project, not having addressed anything for the rest of the town, which will quite reasonably expect similar attention to be paid to its problems, and we don't have answers to that. And in fact, if the answers are, well, some of the new technologies might work, then the question obviously is, well, as Mr. Combs pointed out, perhaps they would work in some of the properties in South Acton. The simple fact is, nobody's really looked at it. I will repeat, nobody has really looked at what alternative technologies could do, at least not in the last 15 years. The last study we have is dated 1985. So if we have to take a vote tonight, since I said previously that I'm opposed to shifting any more cost, I will vote against this article. Even though I have previously said that I'm basically neutral, it's up to the people in the district. But having shifted 30% of the cost onto the rest of us, I am no longer neutral. So think about it. Either we postponed a decision, we don't really lose anything, except perhaps a few months, and before somebody says it, yeah, I know we have contracts, bids that expire, but that's not irrevocable. But we're going to perhaps make a much better decision. Since so many things have changed in the last few days, I will suggest that one of the next, very next, very fast things we should do is start looking at the whole town. And I can go into a lot more detail, that would take too long right now. So if we vote no on the district, no, it's not the end of sewers, if we, I'm sorry, if we vote no on this article, it's not the end of sewers, it's the end of this proposal. And what bothers me more than anything else is this 5.5 million that came out of nowhere in the last few days for the schools. I mean, that one is not going to stay unchallenged, believe me. If that's the basis on which that much money is gonna get shifted to the general tax base, there's gonna be a, there's gonna have to be a lot better explanation.
Yes.
I recognize, are you finished, Mr. Cadillac? The mic went dead. No, 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 please, don't do that. Don't do that. Is the mic alive now? No, it's not. Why don't you go to another microphone and finish your comments, Mr. Cadillac?
Okay, I was saying, much to your distress, to some of you, that the 5.5 million dollar cost is gonna have to be justified much more than one estimate before it becomes a real number that you can count on as being paid for from the general tax base. Take it from there.
You had a simple clarification, I think, on a financing thing? Then I'll recognize you, Mr.-
Well, I wanna comment on the timing question. Yes, for the SRF, at least technically, we have the time that Mr. Gottlieb indicated. But part of the angst that the Sewer Action Committee has gone through to get to this point, and I know Mr. Cadillac knows that, because he sat through some of it, is the timing of the contract bids. If you remember the situation now, we have bids for most of the work. They were good bids. They were good bids because they were bid out in the fall for commencement in the spring. If we wait till next spring, A, I almost guarantee you, the bids will go up, and they probably will not be as favorable. It's very easy, unfortunately, to stand up in this meeting, if you're not an elected official, the rules are a little different, and make flat statements as fact. But I will indulge myself and make a flat statement. If this vote is delayed tonight, this project will collapse. It will be bid more expensively in the spring, there will be more infighting and distraction. This is a movement to defeat. And I hope you oppose it.
I recognize the gentleman at the side microphone, then the back.
I'm David Tompkins from Pinecone Strand. And through all of the several years now of the sewer machinations, we've heard that the town and school share of this sewer project was 15%. Suddenly, suddenly we're hit with $5.5 million, boost it now to 30% or more, or double. It's largely responsible for that. And I have to question why. When I heard this figure last week, I understood that was for a standalone system. What is the cost if it's part of the total project? That has not been clarified. We've seen no cost breakdowns on that. And I have to echo Mr. Cadillac's view, that I think that until that's clarified, I certainly can't vote yes on this article.
Mr. Schupert.
You have to understand that the, when you build the sewage treatment plant, the only thing you're paying for when you hook up the schools is the piping that it takes to get from the central school campus over to the sewage treatment plant. That's been estimated at roughly $3.6 million. That's just the cost of the piping. If you build a sewage treatment plant at the schools and vote this down, you're going to spend 5.5 million, as we know it today, plus interest to build a school sewer system.
The gentleman at the back.
My name is Duncan Wood, I live on Brucewood Road. In 1985, I was in the position of the presenter in April and September of the sewer project. Nancy Tavernier asked me to serve on this committee, and I didn't have the energy, simply stated, in that from '82, Pam Reeser, I think she's here tonight, '82 to '85, we tried to put something together, and it didn't happen. I remember in 1985, first meeting Charlie Cadillac and asking all kinds of hard questions. I respect all the time and effort he puts in to town meeting. He certainly keeps the rest of us honest. My point is, there's a time when things ought to happen. I know there's a phrase, "No new taxes." I think that's one of the saddest phrases that's been added to the American lexicon. Taxes are for a purpose. Community is for a purpose. The purpose is to do things as a community you can't do as an individual. Now, yes, with enough money, technology can basically treat any system on any lot, although it may look very odd, and it may not be functional. I, in the '82, '83 timeframe, thought I had a septic system that would last me 20 years. I replaced it in '89, got a lot of money. I don't need it, I'm not in the district. I no longer have children in the school system. But I do believe this town is ready for a sewer. I believe in 50 years, almost all the town will have sewers. This is the largest populated community in the Commonwealth without sewers. In 1966, the argument was, if we don't build sewers, the town won't grow. That was part of the argument in 1985. If we don't build sewers, the town won't grow. Part of my concern in the community is we've allowed residential growth because we wanted to look like Lincoln, but we didn't spend the money to buy the land. So we don't look like Lincoln. Where every lot that you thought was gonna never have a house on it, now has a house on it. Some of them with very expensive septic systems. I wrote down three things: history, it's time, taxes. We can argue money over and over and over. Everybody has an opinion on what it's gonna cost. I don't know the answer, but I happen to trust the Finance Committee will keep the selectmen honest. And the selectmen are people who put an awful lot of time into this community and get parried very, very, very little. I think we should trust the people who've put the energy for the last 2.5 years into this project and move it forward.
We're on Article 3. There's nine people, the score of the game, 16 to 4, is that right? We don't know how they got that way? I'm just kidding. We now have nine people standing to speak. I would ask, if you have something additional to add, something different from what we've already heard, let's hear from you. If it's repeating the same argument, perhaps we should move on. If everybody's still standing, I'm going to continue to recognize you until something else happens, and I'll recognize Ms. Whaley.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Thank you, town meeting. I move the previous question with pleasure. Second!
Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debates, say aye. Oh, say nay. The debate is cut off. We will now vote on the motion. This, this takes a 2/3 majority to pass. I will try it by voice, but tell us, get ready. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Oh, say nay. Tell us, come forward. I have to do this because we really need a counted vote. I have to do this because we really need a counted vote. When you vote, you have some small colored tickets, I believe. Pink, please be sure to hold those up so that you can be counted. They're not quite ready to count yet. There's Tom Keegan here, I believe he's a teller. If Tom Keegan is here, would you please come forward? Ready? Okay, we will take the yes votes first. All in favor of the motion, please stand. I would ask the constable to please make sure that no one is leaving during the vote. The doors really should be closed during the vote. Okay, all the... Those in favor can sit down, please. We'll now take the no votes. All opposed to the motion, all who wish to vote no, will you please stand? All right, I have the vote count. Could I call you back to order, please? This took a two-thirds majority to pass. We have yes 590, no 107. Clearly, it has a two-thirds majority. The motion has passed. Now, before everybody leaves, before everybody leaves, we have a choice. We could continue and finish. I would say we probably have 20 minutes, 25 minutes at maximum before we can finish because there's going to be a number of articles which are going to be "Take No Action." On the other hand, we could adjourn, and we could come back here, and I could earn another $20 for doing this tomorrow, which is important to the McKenzie family. I want to take a... You can't afford it. I know. Now we can't afford... Now you tell me we can't afford it. I want to just take a sense of the meeting as to whether you want to go on. We'll also, if we do vote to go on, and we hold a lot of the Articles 4 through 16, we may also introduce a motion to adjourn till tomorrow night. How many would like to go on? Say aye.
Aye!
How many would like to stop? Say aye. Say nay. Will go on. No fair voting and leaving. I'll tell you what. If you're going to leave, please leave quietly because the meeting hasn't been recessed. Let me explain what we're going to do. You can all move down front now. There's a lot of good seats right up here. We're going to treat Articles 4 through 16, excluding Article 5, which is a "Take No Action" article, and we'll handle these by consent. They all take two-thirds vote to pass because they are potential eminent domain takings. And what I will do is I will read the articles which are potentially going to be dealt with by consent. If two or more people would like to take that off the consent calendar, if you will, they just do that by yelling out right in place, "Hold," and that article will take its normal place in the warrant. If at the end we find we have some articles which have not been held, and I would assume it would be most of them, I will read a motion, and we will vote on all of them without debate. Here are the articles which can be treated, and this is the time to say, "Hold if you wish." Article 4, Article 6, Article 7, Article 8, Article 9, Article 10, Article 11, Article 12, Article 13, Article 14, Article 15, Article 16. I hear no holds, so here is the motion. Mr. Schubert moves to authorize the selection to purchase, take by eminent domain, or otherwise acquire for sewer purposes the fee or permanent or temporary easements in the parcels of land identified and described in Articles 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 of the warrant, and to authorize the selectmen to expend funds appropriated under Article 18 of the 1997 Annual Town Meeting, Article 3 of the October 5, 1998 Special Town Meeting, and Article 3 of this town meeting for such purpose. Do I hear a second?
Second!
Mr. Schubert, do you want to explain this at all?
Yes. Very simply, there are some easements that we need on people's property to either put a pump station or to put some pipes across. We have negotiated with a number of these people. This is a perfunctory process. There are two processes that you can take land. One is through negotiation with a property owner. The second one is through eminent domain. What this does is it authorizes the Board of Selectmen and the town to, if needed, begin the process of taking land by eminent domain. I should mention that negotiations have gone extremely well with people in the district, and at this point, we don't think we're going to need this, but just in case. That's what this is all about. Thank you.
Okay, we will now vote on Articles... Those articles that I read, I won't say them again. 4 through 16 minus 5. There's no questions at this point. We're ready to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Ho, say nay. I declare it unanimous. We'll now take up Article 5. Mr. Schubert moves to "Take No Action" under Article 5. Do we hear a second?
Second!
Mr. Schubert, any reason why he doesn't want to speak? Okay, fine with me. Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the "Take No Action" article, please... Motion, please say aye.
Aye!
Ho, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. I think if I'm right, we move on to Article 17. I think if I'm right, we move on to Article Seventeen. Rescind and reallocate borrowing authority. Mr. Hunter, you're going to move to take no action?
Correct.
Mr. Hunter moves to take no action. Do I hear a second?
Second!
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Hunter.
As I explained at the outset, this was an alternative article of Article Three. It failed. Article Three is passed. This article's not needed. I recommend you support the motion to pass over.
Any other comment from anybody? Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends taking no action.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye!
Oppose say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Eighteen. Mr. Hunter, you're moving to take no action? Do I hear a second?
Second!
Mr. Hunter?
Ditto.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends no action be taken.
Other comments? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion to take no action under Article Eighteen, say aye.
Aye!
Oppose say nay. Motion has carried unanimously. Mr. Ashton on Article Nineteen. Moves to take no action under Article Nineteen. Do I hear a second?
Second!
Mr. Ashton?
I'm tempted to say ditto. However, this had been set up if we had not voted for sewers as an alternative to deal with certain properties in the district that had no other means of dealing with sewer problems, but the selectmen voted this evening to pass over this article.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends no action.
Other comments? Seeing nobody standing, we will vote. All in favor of taking no action under Article Nineteen, say aye.
Aye!
Oppose say nay. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty. Dealing with a home rule legislation. Mr. Fredericks moves to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for home rule legislation substantially as set forth in this article. Do I hear a second?
Second!
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Fredericks, to your motion.
There's two methods with which we can build a sewage system. The first method is the traditional municipality is responsible for having design done. Municipality is responsible for getting it built, and the municipality is responsible for getting it operated, either operate it themselves or contract it out. There's another method, method number two. Method number two is that you go out for competitive bids to one bidder. This is what we call a turnkey, or what is known as a design-build-operate method of doing this. Method number one is the only method presently under Mass General Law Regulations. This is the method that the Sewer Action Committee started a couple of years ago. In the years ensuing, more and more people have been using method number two, which is called turnkey. In order to do the turnkey, we need to petition the legislature to give us enabling legislation under home rule, so that we in fact can do the option of a turnkey type of method to have the system built. We're not discussing in this article tonight an advantages of turnkey versus traditional. All we're doing tonight is voting to approve... For Town Meeting to approve us to petition the legislature in order that we can get the enabling legislation, so that it is in fact an option for us. So all that is... All we're doing tonight is voting to get us the option, and the selectmen recommend this article.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee... The Finance Committee recommends the approval of this article.
Comments from the Town Meeting members? Seeing nobody standing, we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article Twenty, say aye.
Aye!
Oppose say nay. Motion carries unanimously. You know, if we had this group here earlier, we could have been home watching the game by now. Article Twenty-One. Mr. Kabakov moves to adopt the resolution set forth in the article. Do I hear a second?
Second!
Mr. Kabakov?
I have the enviable... Unenviable position to be in the last thing on the agenda. Quickly, we have an Economic Development Committee. Economic Development Committee is an advisory committee, basically, to advise the Board of Selectmen regarding economic development matters. What this article does is simply make a non-binding resolution, recognizing that we have wastewater treatment considerations when we do economic... Future economic development. It shows that Town Meeting and Economic Development Committee are in concert with regard to ensuring any future commercial development addresses the wastewater treatment problem, and in particular addresses it if it's a big enough district with a wastewater treatment facility. Board of Selectmen recommend that the Town Meeting adopt this article resolution.
From the Finance Committee, please?
The Finance Committee has recommended no action on this article.
Town Meeting members? I see nobody standing, so we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article Twenty-One, say aye.
Aye!
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. And now we only have one more motion that's needed. Mr. Kabakov?
Mr. Moderator, I move we dissolve this Town Meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Aye!
All in favor of dissolving the Town Meeting, say aye.
Aye!
Oppose say nay. The meeting's dissolved. Thank you very much.